Folks, we're going to get started. So get one more cup of coffee, or a donut hole, or a banana, and we're going to get started. Well, first of all, thank you for coming out in this blizzard, for braving it, and not letting anyone stop you. But we are going to be respectful of your time and try to do this smoothly, efficiently, in case the roads get worse. And we're going to have the presentation on the Purple Line near the top of the show, as they say. But what I'd like to do first, because it is a decent community crowd, I'd like us to, as we usually do, introduce ourselves, and maybe what town we live in. We do have some elected officials who I know will introduce themselves. Part of my team is here, and others are coming. But it is a very special privilege that our council member, who overlaps much of the 22nd district, who you know so well, and has worked for the community very diligently, this past week was elected chairwoman of Prince George's County Council, Danielle Glarus. Danielle, congratulations. We're all very proud of having one of our own leading the Prince George's County Council. So we're pretty excited about that, and very proud of her. Thank you. Two members of my team are here, and one is coming, who make a key part of this. Tuanan and Anne, Tuanan Gaines and Anne Healy. I'll let them introduce themselves. But we are a team. We watch each other's back. We're sticking together. And everyone is in a particular place of leadership, in some way, shape, or form. Vice Chair of Appropriations, Anne leads the Rules Committee, and is an active member of her committee. So we're spread out in the legislature, all in a distinct area, but an important area that we work together. So why don't we just go up and down the roads, do a little snake here, and just please give us your name, so your neighbors can see you or meet you, a little networking later. And also, maybe what town or community, in terms of where you live. Larry, you want to start?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Larry Jackson, president of the Prince George's County Association. We are located 512 homes, just on the outside of Contra Parkway.
Great. I'm going to come back to Mike Madden in a minute, but please.
Hi, I'm Susan Madden. I came along. I've said how welcome to me.
I'm Steve White.
Good morning, I'm Margaret Allen.
Michael Farvis, referred to the outside mission from Oakville.
Michael Marvin, president of the Dudo Cafe, where we're having a great gala, New Year's Eve celebration in Greendale, Maryland.
Amy Stewart, I'm Carolton, my granddaughter.
I'm Bill Howard, president of Kingswood Civic Association, which is this area, right in the center.
Jerry Knox, Beacon Heights.
T.O.T., president-elect of Beacon Heights Citizens Association.
Earl Campbell, Riverdale.
I'm Julie Colta, Eddie Mayor from downtown Berwick Place.
Jane Michael Leck, I'm with Carrollton.
Eddie May, I'm in Greendale.
Tony Dack, I'm in Green Hill.
Good morning, I'm Alex Hurle, Riverdale Park.
Daniel Wilson, high school area residents in progress, and same hours.
Hey, there's Mayor of Greendale.
Good morning, Emmett Jordan, Mayor of City Greendale.
Michael Dishat, Riverdale Heights.
Kim Scanlon, University Hills Center.
Wayne Rosenberg, City Council here in Carrollton. And Mayor Hankel, there's another function going on at City Hall, but he's on his way over. Robert is the councilman, I guess, here.
Chris Dory, Purple Line Partners, working the part of the state project.
Good morning, Wayne Phil, Woodland.
Jerry Nance of Greendale, and I have the data on the state tests for the county, and I want to be afterward. And I am gassed that the order of graduation ran has shown lots and lots of smoke, and what we need now is real investigation.
We're going to have time for a discussion, Jerry. We're going to have plenty of time for a conversation. Bill? Bill? Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss you? I'm sorry.
I'm from Greendale, president of the Roosevelt Democratic Club, and also member of the Democratic Association.
I'm Joan Rothke, I'm Paul's partner, and a lifetime resident of Prince George's County.
The plan of approach for the meeting, we're going to keep this informal. We're going to hear from the Purple Line, from the Transit Administration. They're going to do a presentation to walk you through the project on the Purple Line. Then we're going to take questions. So hold your questions until the mic's done. Then I'm going to talk about some of the issues before the county and the state. And we're going to spend time, excuse me, on the Naglev issue. I know a lot of you are concerned about that, and we're going to hear from my colleagues and the council on that as well. And then some time to talk about that. And then we're going to open it up in general, to questions, concerns that you want to share with us. So that's sort of the plan for the morning. We will get out of here by 11:00, if not before. So that's where we're going to proceed. Mike Madden, it's from the state. He's been with it, he said, since 2002. Now, I first learned about the Purple Line in 1995. I've been writing about it for a long time. As Mike will share, the then-governor Glenn Dennis, a former county executive of Prince George's County, announced his support for it in 2001. We are now almost in 2018. And as I told people, it's been a marathon, not a sprint, but we're finally getting there. And Mike's going to give you an overview of how it actually affects you, because your neighborhoods are affected, and I believe will benefit from it. I think the downside will be a lot more modest than people think, but we're going to all benefit from it. So with that, Mike Madden. Here's a mic if you need it.
Can everyone hear me without a microphone? Okay, great. So Senator said, I'm Mike Madden. I work for the state of Maryland, Maryland Transit Administration, MTA. I did grow up in Prince George's County, not far from here, but now I live north of Baltimore, because up until recently, my office was in downtown Baltimore. I'm now located right on Kennelworth Avenue in Riverdale. We share office space with our concession ear team, Purple Line Transit Partners, and that's who Chris Dory is. I'm going to walk you through the presentation, give you a brief overview of what the Purple Line is about, where does it go, where is it in Prince George's County, and then we'll focus on Senator Pinsky's district, talk about where the stations are located, give you some updated information in terms of the schedule of the project. We have started construction, that's the good news. It will take a while to complete the project. So I just want to make sure you all understand what the Purple Line is. Going from west to east, Purple Line connects to downtown Desta. There will be a station where people will be able to go from Wisconsin Avenue and Elm Street, one level below, to the Purple Line Station. And then you'll be able to go, the high-speed elevators, down to the Metro Red Line. So there will be a direct connection to the Metro Red Line there. Purple Line then continues east, goes across Connecticut Avenue, we have a station there, Connecticut Avenue. Purple Line then continues east, goes across Rock Creek, goes into the Silver Spring Transit Center, so we connect to the other branch of the Red Line at Silver Spring. We also connect there to the Mark Brunswick Line. Purple Line then continues east, further east, it runs on University Boulevard for approximately two miles. It then goes right into the heart of the University of Maryland campus. There's the mayor, he's here. And goes on Campus Drive, continues behind the Visitor Center, goes across Route 1 at Rossborough. And if you know where Fraternity Row is, and then the Ritchie Coliseum, there's the station located just on the east side of Route 1. It then continues further east to the University of Maryland College Park Metro Station, so we connect to the Green Line there. We also connect to the Mark Camden Line at that location. Purple Line then follows along the south side of River Road. We have a station, M Square, is what it's called right now. That serves the University of Maryland Research Center, but it also serves the community of Riverdale, because it's actually in the town of Riverdale. So that's where Senator Pinsky's district picks back up. And then it continues, it takes a right-hand turn on Kennelworth Avenue, comes down the middle of Kennelworth Avenue, the Purple Line then, just before it gets to the intersection with Riverdale Road, 410, it goes over that intersection. On the corner of 410 and Kennelworth, we have a station, Riverdale Park, that's actually an aerial station. Purple Line continues along the south side of Riverdale Road, goes past Sinkburns, continues east, and then we have a station at Beacon Heights, and I'll show you where that's located. It then takes a right-hand turn down to 410, Veterans Parkway. The alignment then continues on what I would call the west side of Veterans Parkway, and then takes a left-hand turn at Allen Road, and goes into the New Carrollton Station on that side. That's the Purple Line. Along the way, as I mentioned, we connect to both branches of the Red Line, we connect to the Green Line at College Park, and then we connect to the Orange Line at New Carrollton, along with the Mark Penn Line and the Anthrac Northeast Quarter. A number of the stations are also, have been located so that we connect to the existing bus services. Those are both of Amada Regional Services, as well as U.N. Shuttle, and Prince George's County Bus. In terms of the status of the project, Purple Line is being built differently than most of your state projects. It is being built by what is called a public-private partnership, a P3 partnership. That contract was signed with the Purple Line Transit Partners team back in March of 2016. That contract is actually for a term of 36 years. Six years to complete the design of the project, and then 30 years of operations. So it will not be the state who operates it, it will be a private entity, Purple Line Transit Partners. They have worked all over, that team has worked all over the world, building and operating light rail systems. The contract is actually a total of $5.6 billion. So one of the advantages of this approach is that the state knows exactly what the cost of the project is to build. We know exactly what the cost of the project will be to operate. We do not hand over, the state does not hand over the project to the concession ear Purple Line Transit Partners and walks away. We retain ownership of the Purple Line. We are responsible for reviewing and oversight of all the plans. We have produced a document of roughly 1,000 pages. That includes technical provisions, performance requirements, all those things the concession ear team is required to meet. If they don't, they are financially penalized. In some cases, we also have performance incentives, in terms of how well we perform. The state of Maryland is also responsible to carry out the right-of-way acquisition, which we've been doing for several years. We have most of the, a good portion of the properties, probably about 80% of them are owned by the state at this time. In some cases, we are using existing county right-of-ways, state highway roads, things like that also. We began construction in August of this year, and the project is supposed to be completed 2025. I do have to caution you that at this time, right now, the schedule shows us beginning operations in the spring of 2022, but because construction was held up by a lawsuit approximately a year, that schedule may be adjusted a little bit later time, but we don't know what that is right now. I'm going to live this long, and I'm hoping you will too, Bill. Bill's been around a long time. So when we get to Prince George's County, the first station is actually on University Boulevard, and I'll show you a rendering of that, you'll see in the slide. That is where the Tacoma Lane Crossroads Transit Center has been built. That's been open for close to a year. Purple Line will have a station directly across from that. In addition, overall, for Prince George's County, there were 11 of the 21 stations located in Prince George's County. Prince George's County also has the primary maintenance facility located in Glen Ridge, along Veterans Parkway. That is where the rail vehicles will be eventually delivered. That's where we will start to test them. That's where they will be maintained. We also have the operations building at that location. So if you go to Slide 7, you will see an aerial map that identifies the route from, starting at Adelphi Road, via Adelphi Road, U.N.'s UC Station, that's where the senator's district just touches that. This district does not include the stations on the campus itself. But going east from Adelphi Road, there will be a station located at the main campus location, that will be located between Coldfield House and the Student Union Building. So right on Campus Drive will be a station to serve the university. The Purple Line continues on Campus Drive, basically takes a little bit of a right-hand turn along the engineering fields, goes behind the Visitor Center, goes behind Rossborough again, and goes across at Gray, Route 1 at Rossborough Lane. And as I mentioned, right next to the old Ritchie Coliseum, we would have a station to serve the College Park East Campus area, which is really not too far from where the new hotel has been built, just a little bit north on Route 1. Purple Line then continues under the railroad on what used to be Pink Branch Parkway, but it's now called Campus Drive, comes right up next to the Metro Garage, and serves, easily connects to the Green Line at that location. It then goes out onto the west, the south side, runs along River Road on the south side, not in the roadway itself. And we have a station that's called M Square, that serves both the community of Riverdale and also the research center for the University of Maryland. I mean, Slide 8, the alignment continues out to River Road, takes a right-hand turn at Kennelworth Avenue, goes down the center of Kennelworth Avenue, comes down to Gray after the overpass at that intersection. It goes under the Baltimore-Washington Parkway, and we have a station right at Beacon Heights, across the street from the county police building. It then takes a right-hand turn onto Veterans Parkway. It's not in the road, it's off of the side of the road, same as Riverdale Road. It's not in the Riverdale Road. Runs along the side of Veterans Parkway. As I mentioned, we have a maintenance facility, there are maintenance facility at Glen Ridge. It's located where the Prince George's County Park Maintenance Facility used to be located. We've just recently taken over that site. That will be both the construction staging area during construction, and obviously our maintenance yard. That is where the Purple Line vehicles, the rail cars, will be delivered, and that's where they will begin testing along there. We have a station at Annapolis Road in Glen Ridge, just on the east side of the intersection with Annapolis Road. Purple Line continues along the west, out of the roadway on the west side of Veterans Parkway. We take a left-hand turn on Allen Road, connect into the New Carrollton Station. If you look at Slide 10, Slide 10 shows a rendering of the Transit Center, which has been built now. That's where both Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Amada Metro Buses, and the U.N. Shuttle all go into that facility, so that people can transfer easily from one bus to the other. As I mentioned, right in the middle of the road, in University Boulevard, we will have a Purple Line station. People will be able to connect between the bus transfer center and the Purple Line station by the signalized intersection crossing there. Continuing east, on Slide 11, shows a rendering of the Purple Line running on Campus Drive. That actually is a three-lane concept. The Purple Line and buses will be operating together on the two outside lanes, and one lane will be reserved for traffic, primarily going westbound. But the University of Maryland doing events and things like that could change that in a different direction. Purple Line then goes up under the railroad, under Metro and the CSX line, takes a right-hand turn off of what was Pink Branch Parkway or Campus Drive, goes right up next to the Metro Garage, and connects into the College Park Station at that location. What you're seeing on that rendering on the left-hand side is new development that is planned as joint development with Metro. And then we come down Riverdale Road and across the intersection. Slide 13 shows a rendering of the Riverdale Park Station. So the alignment is in the middle of Kennelworth Avenue, takes a left-hand turn right where gas station is located, that has to be replaced, and the station will be right in that location on the south side of Riverdale Road. Slide 14 shows the location of the Beacon Heights Station, right in front of an apartment complex. Again, this station is just off of Riverdale Road itself, so it's along the south side of Riverdale Road, not in the roadway. MTA has acquired a number of houses that were located very close to the road on Riverdale Road. I believe all those have been demolished by this time. Slide 15 shows a layout of the Glen Ridge Maintenance Facility, again, right off of Veterans Parkway. We'll have storage tracks there. The next slide shows a rendering of the Maintenance and Operations Building. All of the maintenance of the trains, of the rail vehicles, will take place in that building, and you'll be able to see that building from Veterans Parkway. And then finally, on Slide 17, is a rendering of the alignment for the New Carrollton Station. It's just off of Allen Road, just on the south side of Allen Road. A Purple Line station will be located out there. The next slide shows a rendering of the development that is planned by Forest City and Urban Atlantic. That's one of the reasons why the Purple Line is out on Allen Road, so that that area can be redeveloped at New Carrollton Station. Slide 19 shows the Purple Line rail vehicle, and I want to mention that this is a much different vehicle than most people have seen, certainly it's completely different than the vehicle, the light rail vehicle that operates in Baltimore. Instead of two vehicles that are 100 feet long, connected, this is one vehicle that's approximately 140 feet long, that will serve the same capacity. So there'd be only one vehicle running, but instead of 100 feet, it's 140 feet. No need to connect two vehicles, based on the ridership projections. It's a low-flowing vehicle, that means there will be big, wide doors, people will be able to walk directly, not have to step up to get in the vehicle. Obviously, if you're in a wheelchair, you'd be able to enter without any problem at all. So as I mentioned, construction started, we had a groundbreaking, it was actually at the Glen Ridge Park Maintenance Facility on August 28. The full funded grant agreement at that time was approved and signed by the federal government. And so they've been doing work, site preparation, train removal, erosion control, all along the project. The project is not being built one little piece at a time. Construction is starting all along the alignment. There's work going on, a lot of work going on in Montgomery County, it's very far western then, work going along on River Road at Glen Ridge. So there's many locations where construction has already started. Slide 21, which is probably most important to you all, is the overall project schedule. So the utility relocation, that's actually a very big deal. Along Campus Drive, along University Boulevard, Riverdale Road, there's lots of utilities, gas lines, water, WSSC, overhead power, lots of utilities that have to be relocated. We have a signed agreement with all the major utility companies to get that work done as quickly and as efficiently as we can. So that is one of the first things that has to be done when you build a project of this scale. Wherever there are called retaining walls, noise walls, those would be built roughly from spring of 2018 to the winter of 2019, and then we begin grading. And in the winter of 2019, we install the tracks. So you won't be seeing the track right away, you won't be seeing that for a couple of years until the summer of 2020. Then things like train communications, all kinds of systems, type of work, that is one of the last things to be installed in summer of 2021. And then right now, we have a little over six, eight months or so to do testing. So eventually, you'll be seeing trains running, and one of the first places you'll be seeing them operated is along Veterans Parkway. Trains will be running, and they'll be testing everything before we sign off on the start of operations. Near the end of the presentation, there's information about the community advisory teams, the CAFs. We have split up the 16 miles into eight different CAFs. As Danielle knows very well, we have four in each county. And we have one that covers the Riverdale Park area up to Beacon Heights. We have another one that extends from Glen Ridge to New Carrollton. And we have actually started those meetings. And we have actually started those meetings, we've held at least one round for all eight of those. We'll be having more meetings starting in January. The way they work is we contacted all the community associations, business organizations, other larger groups, and we requested that they designate somebody from their organization to serve on the community advisory team. Those meetings are focused on construction. In other words, we want to make sure people in the community know what's happening, we want to hear from them in terms of, is there a problem, are we causing traffic problems? What kind of things can we do better to make construction run smoother? So if your organization is located roughly, I think it was a half a mile between the alignment, along the alignment, we would welcome you to sign up and be part of the community advisory teams if you're not there. The public is also invited to attend those public meetings. They are listed on our project website. The other thing is, the last page talks about signing up for construction updates. You go to that website, our purple line transit partners update those, whatever's happening in your area. You can sign up for just your area or you can sign up for all eight areas along the 16 miles. They will send you, whether it's a text, you tell them whether you want a text or you want an email, they will notify you of what's happening, whether the road is closed, whether lanes are closed. Please, we encourage you to sign up for those notifications.
Okay, before we go to questions, we're going to take five or 10 minutes of questions. We can mention 10 things. Some of you are wondering, how much is it going to slow down traffic? For those of you who've been to the Baltimore-Washington Airport, as you come out on the exit before the airport, there's actually a train track, it's a light rail track. It essentially will come down with an arm and it'll stop traffic for about eight or 10 seconds and then moves on. So to act rate, it's not a big deal, it really doesn't take long affecting traffic. That's about right, 10 seconds. It's very, it's a very brief time. It might take the life of the next 10 or 15 seconds, the light goes on, it's passed, and it won't be another problem for another 15 or 20 minutes till the next train. So that's not a problem. But I want to tell you about transparency, Mike mentioned it. About 10 or 12 years ago, when they were still developing the plan and the line, I think a couple of people later already started looking at it, suggested when it came down East West Highway in Riverdale and it turned north on Kennelworth, because that happens to be a pretty thick intersection. And because coming down the hill, it was already pretty high, I suggested to them, why don't they do a flyover so it doesn't even slow down by 15 seconds that intersection? And I have to tell you, they said, that's an interesting idea. And I encouraged it, that Riverdale Park liked the idea, and they incorporated that. And again, I wasn't the only one, I'm sure they were looking at options, but we pushed that. And it was incorporated, so a flyover on Kennelworth so it won't even slow down that intersection at all. So I think that's pretty important, it shows that they have been pretty responsive.
Yes, we've already named that the Center of Pinsky Park.
If only, if only. One more quick thing. And, you know, for people in the high fill or University Park, you can go up to the College Park stops on Delphi Road or when the College Park stop near the College Park Metro, the bridge behind Whole Foods should be completed in February or March. So that would be another way to get to the stop in Riverdale College Park, near the College Park Metro. And a number of people who said, and worked with the developers of that project, said, unless you have an eastern route in and out, we don't want this project. And after about six or eight months, that was agreed to. And that bridge that goes over the railroad tracks, for those who've been out there, will take you into M Square Discovery, whatever the name of the week is, that they use for that research park. So there are a couple of different ways going on. Let me just very quickly mention three other, a number of people have joined us. The third member of our delegate team, Alonzo Washington in back, Alonzo. We only have one county council member today, we have two. Todd Turner, council member who also overlaps in the 27 district. We also have-
And my wife's chair on my front desk.
Chair, front chair.
That's a lot of power, one chair and another chair. And also, work education member from the district.
Two.
Two. Lupe Grady, Lupe will speak out. Lupe is one of the people who blocked, stopped, changed the cell tower efforts, not putting on that student aid bill. Also, the town is in favor of changing the policy, the enroll policy that we've allocated. So Lupe Grady, thank you for that. And as far as individuals have joined, you're also important, but we're not going to slow things down, so let's go right to questions, right up here.
Yeah, I just have a question. Can you go into a little bit of detail on how you're going to arrange the traffic at the Baltimore-Washington Parkway and the Riverdale Road? Because you have to blast through Baltimore-Washington Parkway and that road is already tied up morning and evening during rush hour.
Well, under the Parkway, we've had to work obviously very closely with the National Park Service because it is both a recreational and historic resource. We are building temporary bridges to take, to shift the traffic over along the Parkway. Purple line is underneath that, you'll see that today. There is a bridge along Riverdale Road, we basically have to widen that bridge out. So there will be temporary bridges, traffic will not be stopped, so it will continue. And then we'll be building a new abutment as we widen that out and then the traffic will be shifted back to the new, new location.
So, yes, Mike?
I wanted to bring to your attention the potential for a real traffic disaster in my neighborhood, which is the Riverdale Heights neighborhood. And originally, the rightway was going to be on the west side of Kennelworth End, and I believe you shifted it a little.
That's right.
Placing some of the businesses on the left side, on the west side of Kennelworth End, it's probably below that. So it creates a potential for much greater traffic disruption, not only during construction, but for the rest of the time it exists, because it's going right through the middle of Riverdale. And I want to point out, if you look at Slide 8, you'll see that there's one major egress out to the entire Riverdale Heights neighborhood, and that's Rittenhouse Road on Kennelworth End. And that's a property that's going to be tremendously disrupted. That's the only way, but the main way out for anyone going north of that. All the other ways will go, will run into construction, you'll feel, people will have to go way around and run into construction at your elevated Pinsky Park Station. So the problem is going to be that there's, it's a small two-lane egress from this fairly large neighborhood that's already backed up. It's backed up so far oftentimes that people zoom into the opposite lane to make the right turn because it's a very long light and people are waiting to turn left. So what you're going to do is you're going to make it even harder for people to turn left and create a tremendous blockhead there and people are not going to have any reasonable alternative. So there's a potential for traffic accidents, it's hard to avoid the problems of the Riverdale Road-Kennelworth End intersection. This is going to be a much, a greater problem on a school road without double lane. So I'm going to make a plea, number one, that you figure out a way to widen Rittenhouse Road at least half a block so there would be a right lane, right turn lane, since you're going to be doing some relocation of utilities, anyway you can do it or say it or not. But this is the kind of lack of planning that I think is crucial to people who live in these neighborhoods that nobody finds out about until it's too late. I mean, I just want to do two more parting shots.
Can I answer that first?
Sure, please.
Okay, so we know that, and I can never remember whether it's Quintana or K-Sub, one of those roads has to be closed because it'd be running up against the wall. We are providing a new roadway, a new connection for that community because of that. And if you, if you email me, I can send you the latest plans to show how that happens.
That still won't address the problem of people mostly going north, but also west, and trying to egress this fairly large neighborhood, which has black roads and dead ends all around it except for that one intersection.
Let's note that because maybe it'd be longer life and even use another-
Sure, I'm sorry to talk too much, but I want to make two other points. The general population should know that Montgomery County is also building an express transit along Route 29. And there are some differences, but that's, I think, an 11 or 15 mile transit using express bus, which was considered here in the turndown. It was, it's being budgeted at, I think, $30 million, which is one half of 1% of what we project is. The second thing, so just to know as taxpayers, the second thing is that towards of the high expense, they made a private partnership, which actually identifies the private partners from anyone, basically the public that will absorb anyone and the private partners are guaranteed their property. And then the third thing, which is not mentioned very much, is that there's going to be a separate charge, and obviously they don't tend to let the charge might be, it's not part of the metro system, because going, and I'd love to hear what the estimates are, is it $2 a ride, or $3 a ride? A separate charge for anyone using that. So all the students who get off their college park metro who want to take that, maybe they'll pay a special fee, I don't know. But the rest of us won't.
Okay, we'll have general conversation later, I want to hear from tomorrow, please. Yes.
That leads into my question, which is, talk about how this system, how the purple line integrates with Metro, versus the New Carrollton Station, is that a walking distance from the Metro stations here?
It's a little bit of a walking distance, but I don't know exactly how many feet it is, but it's close, just like you would transfer from a bus to the Metro. You have a little bit of a walk.
But the College Park, it says under College Park, they're really close, I mean, yeah, College Park.
Yes, College Park, the College Park Station is very close into the Metro, green line. The issue with the New Carrollton Station, at one time we had an alignment that was right up next to the underpass that goes under the railroad. We were displacing a lot of parking at Metro, we were also taking up space where Metro wanted to have future development. So the alignment was then shifted out closer to Ellen Road, but it's still a very easy walk to the station.
And why in this state, in this computer, you can't put the Metro and make the smart card work everywhere?
It will. And the purple line will have a separate charge. We are not Metro, we have to have a separate charge. The charge will not be mileage-based like a Metro fare, it will be a flat fare similar to the bus service, but the fare card will be a smart card we can transfer easily between the purple line and Metro, or between purple line and the buses.
Over here, yeah?
That was one of my questions, I appreciate that. The other thing of curiosity, where are the vehicles in the new factory?
They are manufactured by a company called CAF USA. The assembly begins in Spain, then they are, the main facility, they then are actually final, assembly takes place in Elmira, New York. There are Buy America requirements that we, that have to be met for the vehicles as well as everything else.
We'll take one more quickie, Bill.
I'm in Spain, the county government is paying for the continuation of purple line south.
Well, the purple line is, at New Carrollton, it is left in the direction of where the county has said, have said they would like to have a future connection.
Well, there's planning to-
You have to ask the county. I have, I have seen, I mean, the county has talked about it, I've never seen a plan for an alignment that continues that route.
But it's going to be wrong, it doesn't have to be, part of the county's set, or the general-
Right now, right now, the county and the state are busy trying to get the purple line built. It is pointed, as I said before, it's pointed in the direction where a future extension can come, but that's, that's way out in the future. Neither you or I will be alive yet.
We have a couple of arrangements on the agenda, I want to thank Mike Madden in the state for the great contribution. Keeping things running and moving. We're also joined by the state's attorney for Crystalwood County, who I think has done a great job. She is a scholar, she tells her what it is, whether it's a major case, and I've heard complaints from the courthouse that it's running fairly smoothly because there's still crime, of course. She's prosecuting it, she's not policing it, that's a county responsibility, but we have a brief comment from Isla, also the local state attorney, through his desk.
Good morning, everybody. I see. Can you hear, okay, there we go. Good morning, everybody. I tell you what a beautiful sight this is on a snowy day, this is a serious, serious group. So I am so grateful to be invited here today and so happy to see all of you all. I want to just start out by saying thank you so very, very much to Senator Pinsky, I want to thank this entire District 22 team and all of my other partners from the county council, from the delegation who are here this morning. I just have two quick points really that I would like to make, and that is to let you know that we have developed relationships over the last seven years that have really been productive for Prince Georgians. I am grateful for that. If you probably agree with me on this, there's very little that we can do alone, but we can do a whole lot with the right partnerships. And I have happened to be so lucky to have been a part of a really great partnership, starting, I should tell you also, I really wouldn't even be probably in office but for Senator Pinsky, who came out in 2010. I'm a lifelong Prince Georgian, although I made one controversial choice, which was to go to Duke University. Don't worry, I redeemed myself and came back to the University of Maryland to law school. But Senator Pinsky really did take a chance and this whole team did, and added me in 2010, supporting me, so did all of you all, and I have been so very, very grateful for it. When I talk about the partnership, I want to tell you two great things that came of it. We have strengthened now the state's attorney's office, I have to tell you, and it is the strongest office, it's really, a really, really strong office, one of the strongest we have in the state of Maryland. We did that because when we came to office, we said there were a few things we would do. First is to shore the office by making sure that we increased the resources of that office because when we got there in 10, it was severely under-resourced. We had one of the offices, despite Baltimore City has about the same volume of crime, but we were doing so with half the staff. And so I really want to thank this delegation for allowing us, first, and the county council, that we have increased the resources of the state's attorney's office by 40% in the last six years, meaning that we have, thank you, been able to hire more prosecutors. We went from about 70 prosecutors to over 100. We have also increased the salaries for the entire office. We were paying our attorneys and staff 20% lower than everyone else in the jurisdiction, which meant it was hard to attract and retain the attorneys we needed, but we are now on par with the region and we have, we've increased those salaries and so we're really grateful that we have been able to shore up. And to tell you how excellent those prosecutors are, in the last six years, and this has been at my loss, we have had 10 of our attorneys who have been appointed to the bench as judges in the last six years, so it is a phenomenal office with phenomenal results. The other thing we've done is to affect crime. We've done that because this delegation joined us and asking the governor for increased resources for a unit called Strategic Investigations Unit, which means we've been able to really go after repeat violent offenders. We've done so, so effectively that we are now at the lowest crime rate we've had since the 1980s. We've got a $3 million per year money coming from the governor's supplemental budget. budget, could not have been done without this delegation, and again, short of that office, and we have really been able to attack crime. Finally, the last thing I want to say to you is that we have been smart about it, that we've prevented crime, that we started two programs we're so proud of. One is called I Belong Here, is an anti-truancy program, a truancy reduction program. So our prosecutors are in three middle schools, that they go in every single month, and they are working with students to incentivize attendance and to show the connection between attendance and success. We've been there three years, and we went from a sixty to seventy percent attendance rate for the young people who have been in our program, and they are now at ninety-six and ninety-eight percent attendance. That's our I Belong Here program. We believe it's not just enough to respond to crime, but we've been on the front end of it, and the last program is back on track. And the back on track program helps us with first-time non-violent drug dealers, who we have now brought into our program. They're eighteen to twenty-six years old, they plead guilty, and we work with them for twelve to eighteen months to get them an education at the community college, which we pay for. They go to the community college, get their GED and certification in six different areas. We then work with Catholic charities to work with them to get them workforce development training and support, and we guarantee them a job after the program is done. So each of our participants, and if they're successful, we take the felony off their record for one time only. It's a very rigorous program. If they don't succeed, they go to jail. If they do, they end up graduating from the community college without a felony conviction and a guaranteed job. This is the second year we're in that program, the county council really is credited with helping us to support it, and we are really proud of it. I'll say this in end, you know what? We're headed, the best is yet to come in Prince George's County. Prince George's is the crown jewel of Maryland. We will continue to work together to make sure we're investing in our children, that we're making sure our communities are safe, and that we're providing opportunities for the future, for our young people and for our families. We'll do that together as a community, and we most certainly will continue as electeds, but I want to thank you for the honor of serving you. This is the community that raised me. I've been here my entire life, and it has been my joy and really an honor to serve you each and every day, and I thank you so much for that opportunity. And thank you again, Senator Pinsky, and thank you for the rest of all of my colleagues in public service for the support and for working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. She's great. I'm gonna, you know, normally I'll take fifteen or twenty minutes and give you the state of the district and the state of the state. I'm gonna take about five minutes because I want to leave the balance of the time for questions and comments from you, and I want to let some of the elected officials help answer the questions with me. Let me just mention two areas, because I could spend hours talking about what's happening in the state and in the county, but let me, I want to talk about two areas. Some of you have heard some of these issues, but transportation has been on the agenda today. I know people have questions about the MAGLEV. The metro system that some of you use to get to work is underfunded. We know that, it's been in the news. There's not enough to make the repairs and have it work efficiently and effectively, and it's the major transportation mode for many people in the region. But DC, Northern Virginia, Maryland, Montgomery, Prince George's County contribute as well as to federal government to make it run. And we don't have dedicated funding like New York City and Chicago, and we need a dedicated fund of money to do that, but unfortunately, the governor has been unwilling to commit to a dedicated funding source. And that's a problem, because we can't plan two years, five years, ten years to make the metro the best system in the country. So while the governor has not agreed to a funding source to keep metro on firm foundation, he made two proposals about two or three months ago. One was to add lanes to the Baltimore-Washington Parkway and take it from the federal government to add lanes to the Beltway and add lanes to 270, the corridor between Frederick and DC. But these lanes are not for free. There would be toll lanes. And you've been following the news in Virginia, forty dollars one way for ten miles, forty dollars one way for ten miles. The proposal he has proposed would be, I don't know what is bigger than billion, gazillion? I don't know. It would be super expensive and actually, in some areas, impossible. And rather than come up with mass transit like a busway, like Mark talked about, he's suggesting he's gonna add more roads and help the road builders make more roads and make more profit. And this is a perfect example, on Route 270 in Montgomery County, they have a plan to put a lane next to 270 from Frederick to DC so there wouldn't be any traffic. It would be for bus commuters, where they would know it's gonna take them thirty or forty minutes to get from Frederick to, or fifty minutes to get to work. Traffic congestion wouldn't affect it. It's called the corridor, Capitol Corridor Transitway, CCT anyways. The governor rejected that, and the cost would have been modest. It's not a radical proposal, but yet he proposes adding four lanes to the Beltway, which can't be built. He wants to take over the Parkway, which was not meant as a commuter road, and you all know it's backed up from three to seven o'clock every night. And they probably, they took it over by the state, start putting billboards up as well when it's supposed to be a green road. So that was one proposal. And then about a month later, he proposed something called MAGLEV, magnetic levitation train. My understanding is there are like three in the world, and two in China and one in Japan. These work based on a magnet, they're above the tracks, they go three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty miles an hour. That also is a thirteen to sixteen billion dollar project. The cost would be unbelievable for you to use it. I mean, I know, I steer clear of the Acela training if I have to go to New York because it's so expensive. This would probably double or triple the cost. They would have built to Baltimore and then to New York. There are a number of problems. One, it would tear up our communities. It would go under communities to the Beltway and then come up through Greenbelt Forest and ruin some of that green space. And a number of the alignments are within our district. I think it's wrong-headed, and we're here, I think, answering some of your questions, some of my colleagues will also speak to it. You know, to try to say we should build a MAGLEV train that could cost three or four or five hundred dollars, which we will not use, while it's not willing to take care of the metro system that we and our neighbors do use, is Alice in Wonderland. Up is down, and down is up, it's backwards. So the governor's transportation plan is bankrupt mentally, not financially, although I think it would bankrupt the state if the state had the, was liable for this as well. So that's an issue, and we're gonna work on it, there's gonna be legislation, I'll let in a moment, Delegate Gaines talk about that, and Delegate Healy in Washington, we're gonna try to have legislation to stop this stupid project. Look, doing one high-speed train, yeah, it would be nice, but if you do it without disrupting communities and where it's affordable, then they talk about it, but we have some priorities here that clearly come first, and we have to take care of transportation for working middle-class people, not for wealthy people on a big finance account where they can write checks and write their credit cards off. Second issue, what I want to just mention briefly, and then we will open it up and prompt it to level, is education. Our schools are underfunded. While we're making slow and steady progress, there are some things, like in every school system needs to change, but I think we're headed in the right direction. But there's a commission, a statewide commission, which I sit on and Delegate Washington sits on, we're two of twenty-three or twenty-four from across the whole state, that is looking at refinancing and coming up with a new formula for state education funding for the whole state. We had one about fifteen years ago called the Thornton Commission, and they injected a lot of money that was spread over six or seven years without moving the difficult straits. The original intent was for this new commission to update that. But we're also doing a second thing, and that is trying to create a roadmap to making our state school system the best in the country and competitive in the world. What are they doing right in Finland or Singapore or South Korea or in those, or Ontario, Canada? What are they doing right in Massachusetts, which is getting better results than we are? It means changing some practices, it means making, attracting and retaining the best and brightest to lead our classrooms. But unfortunately, some of our best and brightest are choosing other careers, because teaching is not seen as an important, respected profession. In other countries, it's much more respected. It's harder to get into teacher preparation programs, salaries are comparable to architects and engineers, they're treatment-like professionals, they have more time to play with their colleagues and get a better product, get better results. So we're looking at doing that, coming up with a roadmap to improve our schools, and working from where we've had successes, and whether it's Montgomery County or Baltimore City or Garrett County in the west, or Somerset in the east, we want to have a great school system. And again, I said this to you before, we've got two hundred and five, two hundred and eight schools in our county, some are doing a great job. Unfortunately, some have major, major difficulties, and it's concentration of poverty. And we need wraparound services to help people with counseling, with economic support, you know, because some of these young people, whether it be a one- or two-parent household whose parents who work at night and cleaning buildings downtown, and are being raised by a sibling, have challenging lives in their early years, and they come a few steps behind people from a more middle-class background, and we have to address that as well. So, and related to that, and I will stop on that note, we have a lot of our people graduate our schools in twelfth grade who want to go to get a job certification, or who want to get an AA degree, because that does increase their potential income. And while the community college is a modest rate, people still incur debt. So I would be introducing with a number of other colleagues in the chambers, the degree or job certification without debt bill, that will eventually phase in free community college for families who are making under a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And also, at the same time, freeze tuition at the four-year universities for at least three years, so people know they're gonna be able to afford it, and tuition's not gonna go through the roof. So we, and myself and my colleagues, are working on a lot of initiatives at the state level, at the county level, but I think I can speak for everyone that we do what we do because of you. We want to be able to turn around, know the people who support our efforts, and occasionally challenge us and push us, but we want to do what's right for the community and for the state, and take the big picture look of improving the quality of life and address issues like social justice, economic justice, and environmental justice. So with that, I want to thank you for coming today. We've got about fourteen minutes for questions. Delegate Washington, why don't you come up, because we're gonna have you join us in answering some of these questions. So come on up with your colleagues here, and let's start opening up for questions. Mr. Orleans?
I'd like to discuss your, the unwritten rules or your adopted published written rules. And a second question would be, for example, you by the chair, who will be the chairman of the chair of T H E, and why the Michael Penn is responsible for the mayor. Many of you didn't have us on the, so what, the county would get a public process to consider dedicating the Purple Line South Carolina. So two questions.
Okay. Look, most organizations I've ever been a part of have written rules and unwritten rules, and I think there are process questions that are in rules of the organization, and then there are informal rules that people follow out of courtesy or respect or whatever. Sometimes, because they're not written, you can follow them, and some people can choose not to follow them. So I think that's an answer to your first question. In terms of extending the Purple Line, you know, Todd, take a quick minute. Todd Turner, Captain.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Bill, always for your questions and interest. I will say this, right now, as Mr. Madden said, the priority is actually getting the Purple Line built, because I know a lot of people thought after we did the announcement a couple of months ago that that was behind us, but it's gonna take a lot of work to do that. However, the county is interested in expanding the opportunity for the Purple Line. What the Department of Public Works of Transportation is required to do, and I understand they're doing this, and something we'll look at next year, is to update our Transit Service Operations Plan, and that's for a whole range of transit services, whether it's metro, the bus, and others. So I think that should be part of the conversation as we're planning and updating the plan about what the future is. But it is, as part of our transportation priority process, the expansion of additional metro and/or transit services, part of that discussion.
Okay, before I take the next question from Jerry, two announcements. First of all, there are Purple Line tote bags on the sides on the way out. We want to get, you know, take one, please. We might not have enough for everyone, but please take one. Secondly, a quick reminder, Martin Luther King's birthday, Dr. King's birthday in memorance. Many of you come to Annapolis, we, the delegation hosts a dinner remembering Dr. King, and also celebrate the Twenty-second District. There'll be a couple of buses, there'll be one from the community across the street, and there'll be one from Greenbelt, and you can contact their office, and if you haven't gotten the announcement, please check with Ian or Carol in our office. And their postcards announcing it as well for that. Jerry, you have your name up.
So anyway, yeah, the Purple Line, and I hope, I'm thinking of extending it to Annapolis on Woodside and then to Palos Anza on the other, but that's a thing for the next century or whatever. What I would like to talk is about the educational thing. So it wasn't the commission that looked at the graduation rate only, and it found that in twenty-four of the twenty-eight of the high schools, there were students who were graduating who shouldn't have. There were, there were fifteen thousand students graduated in the last two years, of which five thousand had grade changes after the deadline for making grade changes. There were grade changes that were signed by the principals but not by the teachers. So there's a whole pack of things just with the grade, but aside, in addition to that, we've had cases of child abuse, and yes, some of the abusers have been sentenced to jail for a long time, but I'm not aware that any of the principals were protected after the project. So what we need to do, and apply the gold standard investigation, starting with the much smoke that the commission has found and look for the fires, as well as other types of things. And what happened in Atlanta was, there was two state investigators, sorry, two state prosecutors, sixty state investigators, and they were given ten months to uncover what was happening, and that's what it takes. And hopefully, you know, our team will support.
Okay, I'm gonna give a quick answer, then I'm gonna bring up Ms. Gray, the school board member. It was an audit, it wasn't commissioned, it's a private audit that did this, and the first thing they found was, there was no direction from the central office, from the superintendent, that said, "You should do this, you should pass people just to get their numbers up." Jerry, it's my ticket, chances, here. Were there a number of grade changes? Absolutely. And could some of them have been of rogue principals who felt, "Maybe I should get my graduation numbers up"? That very well could be true, and I think there's a responsibility on the superintendent to get on top of that and take whatever action is necessary. I taught for twenty years. I made a grade change in the last week of the senior before he graduated. He was on the borderline. He was a troublesome kid who was a smart kid, who did some of the work, sometimes, sometimes not. I kept him for the next two weeks, because he was on the borderline, and I gave him some significant assignments to show whether he was serious and understood the material, because there's a question of whether we judge kids on whether the time they put in the seats, or whether they have the confidence and understand the material. And so teaching is a little more complicated, and I don't know all the details of those five thousand. And I think it was too many, and I think he's got to be looked at. I don't think there was a conspiracy, and I think what happened in the schools in the southern part of the county of child abuse is horrible, and that principal should have dealt with it earlier. I do know there were eighteen thousand employees in the school system, some pretty large number. And unfortunately, there are not enough quality volunteers, there are not enough quality teachers, and even principals. We need more. And we can't be, our county... And we can't be, our county, as careful because our applicant pool is like this, not like this, because people are not choosing to come into the field. But I can tell you, Jerry, that those situations, we're hearing about Montgomery County and Fairfax County and DC, it's not because of a horrible situation just in Prince George's. And actually, and let me tell you something, and I didn't agree with him, because of what happened at that school with a guy who molested 30 or 40 kids, horrible situation, horrible. The next year, the superintendent, Dr. Mattwell, told every principal, if there's a hint, a hint of wrongdoing, we want to know about it. They ended up reporting, and I can take out of the classroom 700 teachers, because people went from being too lax to anytime someone looked wrong and were reported, they took them out of the classroom. And a lot of these teachers, two months later, were out of the classroom. I ran into one when I was biking one day, who was taken out of the classroom for no reason and she got a call two months later and said, there's no way she can even go back. Her students missed her for two months. So he tried to compensate, but I think he overcompensated. Now this year, they finally come to a policy where you've got principals who've been trained, what's serious, what's not serious. So I'm not going to stand here and be an apologist for everything that's happened in the school system, but I think you also have to look at some context. Lupe Grady, I want you to give a quick response also.
So I just want to give a little bit of background. The allegations were that it was a systemic corruption. So in how the board got to find out that this was a request to Governor Hogan, the issue was not brought up to the remaining of the board. It was a couple of our colleagues that had gotten some information or heard, but we never, the rest of the board never, this didn't come back to the board. So this, a letter was written to Governor Hogan. So I give that as a background because when we talk about governance and we talk about Hogan herself's accountable and following administrative procedures, it starts with the governance of the board. And so if we are not given an opportunity to look at the issue and then address the issue, that is problematic. However, we are here and there was an external finding that happened. With that finding, we were not pleased with the finding. I'm not going to sit up here and make excuses about the findings. However, I've taken the time to talk to counselors that similar to what Sarah Pinsky has mentioned, they've said to me, we have, there was one counselor I spoke to that left to DC. She gave me a story about how she found herself changing students would have the coursework. But at the end, what ended up happening, she took a coursework out that was actually a mandatory and then had to like, at the end, it was a student to realize that this was a human error and they had to put and do something in the summer. So to the 5,000, there are a lot of different reasons or what have you. I don't know all the details. We are having a meeting December 19th, that's a special session to dive deeper into this issue. We had, we had an open discussion probably two days after the external findings were, actually came out. The part of the counselor that information center, one of the things that if we have antiquated systems, so for example, we have what's called SchoolMax. So SchoolMax allows you to look into the grades, to sort of monitor grades for your child. There's a parent component here where you're supposed to try to just be in vision, look at this and monitor that. However, in the SchoolMax piece, there is another, we're looking into what would it take, what's the cost to maybe create a more systematic way of doing this? Not like literally, we have found that our counselors are tallying things by hand. That's human error. Also, one of the findings is that there's, across the board, there are procedures, but procedures are not being followed. So we're trying to understand how, they're already limited the access of who changes grades. So at this point, we're really trying to understand the details of what the findings brought up and what are, what are the issues around systemic, what are the issues around the policies that I've been adhering to. And so December the 19th is this particular meeting.
Great, thank you. We're going to do a speed round here. We've got about five minutes left. So a very quick question and keep it real brief and then we're going to knock through these as quickly as possible. One, two, three, yes.
Okay. My question is, I became very active in the last maybe eight, nine months. And this is the first time I see one of these meetings. I don't know how often that you have, but is it possible to go from maybe once a year to once a quarter? Because it's very informative and I think you might have a larger audience who really wants to come out and do these kind of meetings.
First of all, thank you. I've been doing them once a year. We'll look, you know, the three month serving sessions are a busy. I'll look at doing another one. But the other thing is all of us are more than happy to come out to your civic association or your neighborhood association and many might, Alonso, want you to do a quick answer.
Sure. Well, as, well, my name is Montse Washington, one of your state delegates. And can we give all around applause for all the great work that he's done in Annapolis and for our state? You know, we host many, many meetings throughout the year. I host table talks once a month throughout the year that I send out to. We, we're very limited in what we can do to outreach. Our county council has a better outreach mandate and where they can mail stuff to you, snail melts and things to you. We can only send through email or through Facebook. So most times when we send invitations to my monthly, to our monthly, to my monthly events, it's usually through email. So we do table talks once a month and we usually go around the district into different areas. So our next one we're going to have is going to be in New Carrollton. So we'll have one in here.
But we will take into consideration the idea.
It's going to be in January. We have a trust and date, yeah, but we will.
Okay. But it's going to be, yes.
So last year, Mr. Pinsky, you sponsored and helped get past SB 1023. It's a bill that basically squashed any chance for a citizen based redistricting for 2020. At what point did you put the Democratic Party in front of the citizens of Maryland?
Well, that's your characterization. Redistricting in every state is done by the state legislature and they decide how it works. The three most egregious examples in the country where they pack either African Americans or Latino or Democrats to benefit a party is North Carolina, Pennsylvania, and Virginia. Some of these states, President Obama won the popular election, but when you look at their congressional delegation, it's like 12 to 2, 12 congressional Republicans and two Democrats because they've squeezed them in. Now, in Maryland, we have eight people, seven Democrats and one Republican. If it came up with a new configuration, could it end up being six Democrats and two Republicans? Very possible. And the governor, who happens to be a Republican, and this is a nonpartisan debate, he's saying, you should take it away from the legislature, give it to an independent body. Well, if that happens, Maryland is saying, yeah, we think it's a good idea. We need a good idea for the country. Because the people who've gotten the greatest advantage, you know who controls the House of Representatives, is Republican Party through abuse. And so rather than support the governor's effort of saying, sure, we'll give away one of our Democrats, I put in a bill that said, look, we will go to an independent party if a similar sized state controlled by the other party agrees to do it as well. So if we're going to do it, what's fair is fair is fair. Because what you're, what you're seeing is in states where the Republicans are abusing it, they're asking the Democrats to give it up to someone else so they get even further advantage. I mean, in Florida and North Carolina, Texas, they've been told by the courts probably five or six times, they had to redo their redistricting because they squeeze in everyone to reduce the power of black and Latino and in those states, Democrats. And the worst abusers, I'm telling you, in the country, where you look at the popular vote of a presidential or even the total congressional vote and the delegation are in states where the Republicans have abuses. So I thought doing that was a wrong approach. I thought doing it, matching up with another state was a more fair approach. In the best.
Citizen rights groups like Common Cause support the governor's initiative.
Well, and I think that, you know, I think they had their heads in the sand. Okay? On that issue, I think they're wrong. Yes?
The sick though, does that be a providing danger and so are you like that?
Last year, we passed a law that got watered down and I can have one of these folks mention it, which said, if you work for someone and you're there, I want to say four months and you work at least half time, you should acquire some paid sick leave. I mean, there are many, tens of thousands of people who work, who if they don't go into work, they don't get paid. If they stay home with their child who's sick, they don't get paid. People who work five or 10 years full time. We were in a doctor's office, someone, you know, in our county and she worked for the doctor, they don't have paid sick leave. Forget vacation leave, no paid sick leave after you've shown your commitment to work for them for two years, five years, and 10 years. So we passed a bill last year that said you can acquire up to five days a year. That's, you know, you have a family of children, you're sick, you will come in sick because you don't get paid and you could actually jeopardize other people at the workplace. It was opposed by the chamber, by small business. And we even said, if you have a business smaller than 25 employees, you aren't even covered by this. So if you're a family business, I didn't like that, but I've said, any business over 25 employees have to give paid sick leave. The governor vetoed that bill. Everyone in our delegation voted for it, was an active supporter of it. The governor vetoed it. We're getting back during the first week. We believe we had enough votes to override it and make that the law of the land, so we intend to do that. Now, we're going to stay around a little bit more, Sam, I promise. Eleven, I'm ready, five minutes over. We're going to stay around, again, Tuana Game, stand up, Tuana, Anne Healy, Alonso Washington, the three delegates who you elect who are working for you every day. Apprehension, you have a lot of our community elected officials, Lincoln Lashley is also council member. Carol came in a little late. The vice chair of the county council, school room member, Lupe Grady. We're going to stay around a couple of minutes. Thank you for coming out with the elements. Hopefully it's been informative. We're aware of some of your concerns and we're going to respond to some of them. We look forward, if you can come out to Annapolis on Martin Luther King's birthday, please come, it's a great dinner, a couple of great speeches. Thank you for all you do because you make it worthwhile for us and you're what drives us to do what we do. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Good talking to you. Yeah, it's.